You just a quick overview of cholera, the current cholera pandemic. People tend to forget that we are in the seventh cholera pandemic still, which has been going on for decades. And also highlight some of the cholera challenges that we are facing now. Some are new and some are not that new. Let me just give you a quick overview of 2021 cholera, global cholera situation. And this is coming from a recently published WHO Weekly Neurological Report that I encourage you to, 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 to take a look at. So overall, we have approximately 30 countries that reported cholera, five reported imported cases and, and some like India did not report cholera. And this is very strange for reasons that we all know. And what is also new in 2021 is an increase in, in death. That's an increase in case fatality ratio for cholera. And of course, the growth on the reporting of cholera in countries such as India. And we know that cholera reporting has been a challenge for quite some, some times. So overall, let's say there are few things that were new in 2021. First, in the number of countries that reported confirmed cholera outbreak. So that were approximately 23. And, and these were country with unexpected cholera resurgence. So this is a country that, you know, haven't had cholera before or that were able to control outbreak, you know, about for, for, for years now. And let's look at country, for example, such as Afghanistan, Pakistan, Nepal, Rwanda. These are countries with no cholera for, 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 for years. And what is also new in 2021 is the, we have seen the largest outbreaks in decades, you know, happening, especially in West Africa, where we had a huge outbreak in Nigeria, Niger. You can look at the, at the map on the right there. And we had new outbreak in, in, in Afghanistan and Pakistan and India. So what has happened is that the WHO and the Global Task Force for Cholera Control, they step up their, 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 their support. And most of the outbreak completely exhausted national and international capacity to, to respond. Because we had, you know, to mobilize people, supplies to respond to so many outbreaks. And what you've seen, I'm sure in the news was the shortage of OCV and other cholera commodities. So something that was striking also in 2021 was the increase in cholera case fatality ratio. We've seen, for example, a global CFR of 1.9. And in Africa, we had it CFR of 2.9. When is, you know, is estimated that the CFR in normal cholera well managed, you know, setting should be less than 1%. So now we, we want to understand why. There are various drivers, you know, either conflicts, of course, humanitarian crisis, you know, climate or natural disaster, all these catastrophic climate events, the hunger and other factors, and including COVID. COVID was cited in most countries as delaying the implementation of key cholera preparedness and response activities, including delays in implementation of some of the cholera campaigns. So if we look at 2022, so far, we have more than 26 countries that have reported cholera. Ten new countries with outbreak specifically in 2022 and 16 countries with continuing outbreaks. So of course, we also see so large outbreaks. Look at the red on the map here in Eastern and Southern Africa and of course, huge map in West Africa. And what is new here? We have countries that are reinfected or reaffected by cholera after years or decades. So look at the, the marks in the, in the Indian subcontinent in the Middle East. And all outbreak spreading, you know, in the hills of humanitarian emergencies. I'm talking about the own of Africa crisis. So here we are just zooming a little bit on Western and Central Africa, just to highlight the, the, the context. There's a very crowded, you know, slide, but you can see that there are multiple drivers of, of, of the outbreak here. There are these massive humanitarian emergencies, crises, conflict, population displacement and the, the, the long drought in, in the Sahel. And also these excessive flooding, rainfalls in Nigeria and Niger. So you can see the countries that were affected. Each of these country had a, a, a situation that could potentially be an accident driver for the cholera crisis. But there were some challenges. And most of the challenges, you will see, they are kind of recurrent. You know, delay in investigation, stretch human resources, you know, accessibility to some of the population, lab capacity to diagnose cholera. So if we go through the other slide, you will see we have similar patterns of drivers, of challenges, of, of cholera risk. This is just, you know, zooming a little bit on the, the own of Africa, where we are facing a dual crisis of, you know, a food insecurity, drought and malnutrition, vaccine preventable diseases, outbreak and also the, you know, persistent risk of, of cholera in countries such as Somalia, Ethiopia, South Sudan and Kenya and Sudan. And the challenges are basically the same. The stretch human resources, stretch financial resources, delays in confirmation due to lab capacity and health systems. And of course, some challenges, you know, blame on the COVID, you know, related with the implementation, delaying implementation of the some, some of the preventive campaigns. So I'm not going to repeat the same thing on the Southern Africa and Eastern DRC. We, most of you in the, in the, in the call, you've worked in some of these areas. So you know exactly what we are talking about. But what is new is, is the Middle East. So these are area where cholera outbreaks have been rare. Some of these, most of these countries have eliminated cholera for years or if not decades. But the context was a bit different now. We had a massive humanitarian crisis, conflict with resulting population displacement and of course, climatic events or like such as regional drought. So we had a cholera outbreak reported in Syria, in Iraq, in Iran. And of course, the protracted cholera outbreak in, in Yemen. And the challenges for cholera are the same. Surveillance, you know, capacities that are stretched, you know, coordination in some places such as Yemen, where you have multiple authorities controlling multiple part of the countries. And the risks for cholera response, I think they are kind of, you know, cross cutting of, you know, from all these settings. How do you access the population? How do you make sure we have lab capacities? How do we make sure that we access populations that are sometimes already facing compounding risk such as, you know, displacement, malnutrations or, or, or other risk of vaccine preventable diseases? So let me just keep the Indian subcontinent. This is also a place where we had an outbreak of cholera reported in Afghanistan, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Nepal and the Philippines. For obvious reasons in Afghanistan and Pakistan with this catastrophic flood that the country experienced earlier this year. So at the global level, we can summarize the situation of cholera in very simple word. The number of country affected is increased. The, not the case fatality is, has increased. The spread of the, of the disease within countries and between countries has, has increased. And the climate is playing, you know, an increasingly obvious roles with all these catastrophic climatic event floods in unprecedented monsoon or persistent drought, you know, increased cyclones that have been seen in various places. And of course, manmade disasters where we have conflict, Afghanistan, Ethiopia, Mozambique and all these countries. And unfortunately, in some countries, we suspect that there are things happening, but the visibility that we have on some of these outbreak is not evident. Just to mention Djibouti, Eritrea, India and places such as Myanmar. I, I can't conclude this presentation without the vaccination challenge. This has made headlines in mainstream media. But we like to emphasize at the GTFCC that OCV is not a magic bullet. It's just a way to give countries, you know, to buy time to, to, to make sure that we increase, you know, wash and sanitation infrastructure. But the, the, the global supply for OCV was extremely stretched. So if you look at, for example, the number of doses that were approved, approximately 3.6 million doses that were approved. When the, the current stock at the time we're drafting this presentation was only 4.6 millions. And I'm sure you also heard of the manufacturer who kind of withdraw from cholera business by the end of this year. So it means that the prospect for OCV availability for the coming years even, you know, worse than, than they were before. So if the demand is kept at the same level, we will face some, you know, an even bigger lack of OCV. So too many cholera outbreak to, you know, huge demand for ACV or for OCV availability is limited. So just to conclude, the partners, they are stepping up their support. Last week, we had a, a joint webinar, I'm sure some of you participated, of the GTFCC where we, we, we issue a call for action on cholera. I know each of the agencies, WHO is regaining cholera. UNICEF is stepping up their effort. And I'm sure the same thing is, is happening with other agencies or partners of the GTFCC. So I'll stop there, Simone, and hand it over to you. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And I think there's a, a pretty clear indication of the step up is the amount of people on the call as well today. So as I said, we'll, we'll go through all the presentations and then make sure we have the, the time for discussion for everyone. So Ruin, are you on the, are you, are you with us? There we go.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Simone, Simone's role has to leave early. So I wonder if we can take questions for him so that he, he can depart if he needs to.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I have an Ebola meeting right after that.
You have an Ebola meeting, I'm skipping. I'm, I'm just going to check really quickly if we've got any hands. I see Ruby's hand up.
Oh, might be anyone. I, I just wanted you, if you could quickly clarify what the GTFCC call for action was? What did it include? Just very briefly?
Yeah, very briefly, the call for action, first of all, you know, acknowledges, you know, the, the, the support of all the members of the GTFCC, recognize that cholera is still a public health emergency. And sorry about that. That climate change is definitely one of the major drivers for cholera epidemics these days. And of course, it was calling on partners, founders, government to step up their support for, for, for cholera preparedness and response. Yeah, I see Grace has her hands up.
Go ahead, Grace.
Yeah, thank you for having me here. I am really happy to be part of this group. We have been working on issues of pandemic preparedness in Uganda for four years now. And, and I thank you, Raul, for bringing this to my attention. The issue of vaccines for cholera. So first of all, I'm surprised that Uganda is not on the list. I don't know how you did the, the statistics. But in southwestern Uganda, there are many, especially the borders with DRC. There are many hotspots for cholera. And vaccines have been the approach for, for elimination of cholera. But as an anthropologist, I also see these people struggle with access to clean water. They also have displacements, insecurity. And, and I think you, you already hinted on it, like authorities, different authorities and how they manage these areas could be some of the risk factors or predictors to having cholera epidemics in these areas. So are you having mixed, mixed feelings about the vaccine? Or you still wanted the vaccine issue to proceed?
Yeah, Grace, so in fact, Uganda, you see Uganda is not there because if we want to really list all the countries where, will, it'll be more than that. That's, that's why we say more than 30. And I think we focus mostly on the huge outbreaks that we have. But on the vaccine, I think it was clear, it's clear that the vaccine is not the magic bullet. It's, it's just a way to make sure that we buy time, that we reduce morbidity and mortality. And while the system actually solve the key drivers of cholera. And so this is access to safe water, improve sanitation, wash is definitely key. And of course, solve all the other issues that are drivers of cholera, including, you know, all the issues related to, to availability of even food. Because it doesn't make sense to, to, to treat a kid for, for cholera. He dies from measles. So all the health system issues, all the infrastructure issues, all the governance issue. So really, you are, you are very right, is a battle from multiple front.
Thanks, Raul.
All right.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think we'll get to Izzy's presentation as well and hopefully some discussion on exactly those kinds of integrated analyses. Thanks. Thanks, Raul. Good luck on the Ebola.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I have to go. Bye.
Ruin, over to you.
Great. Thank you. Share my screen. Okay, you just confirm that you can see, you can hear me and see my slides and not my notes?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Perfect. Okay, we're in business. All right. Thank you, everyone. What a treat to go after Dr. Raul giving a great global overview of, of what's at hand. I'm going to be briefly presenting on some work that, that we've done to look at cholera outbreaks over the years in fragile states and conflict affected areas. As he was saying, that's where we're seeing such a big resurgence in cholera right now. And the idea is to kind of review what's worked in previous outbreaks to shorten the time to detection and response. And, and just look at global metrics over time. So hopefully that will give us some ideas about what data to collect right now as we're trying to monitor many outbreaks at the same time. And just to say, this has been already published in a paper. If you're, if you're interested, you can just put that link in the chat as well. And there's lots of other great papers from the scorn collection at BMC Medicine. All right, so cholera outbreaks. So rapid detection, response to cholera outbreaks is the cornerstone of control. They, as we know, they quickly overwhelm public health systems, especially in fragile states where transmission and geographic expansion really happens very quickly. And there's a lot of background community transmission that's happening by the time the cholera outbreak is detected. So I have a personal interest for a PhD I'm doing. And then also there's a global trend in trying to look at small case clusters and better ways at responding, detecting and responding to those small case clusters as quickly as possible. So that would be optimal, but how feasible is that? Rapid detection of small outbreaks of cholera. So the objectives of the current study were to look at a large set of cholera outbreaks in fragile and conflict affected states and evaluate the, the trend and delay from the onset of symptoms of the, of the primary case, the first detected case in the outbreak, to presentation to care, outbreak detection, investigation, response and confirmation by lab culture. And then second point was to look at how big those outbreaks, how, how large those outbreaks were at that time that they were detected and the other points in time in, in the, in the timeline. And then we wanted to investigate some of the determinants of those delays. And that could be, you know, whether there's an early warning system present, other predictors, and then also look at improvement over time. And this generally corresponds to examining the phases of preparedness, alert and response. So just looking at the whole cycle, how, how are we doing overall? So we did a systematic review of cholera outbreaks. And this was again, a year or so ago. So it was from 2008 to 2019. And we looked at fragile states as, as defined by the World Bank, as well as refugee hosting countries. And then those countries that are reporting cholera to WHO and others that don't officially report cholera to WHO, but acute watery diarrhea, et cetera. The outbreak definition was pretty standard one that we used here that you can read. And you know, the important thing was where to find the information on the outbreak. So of course, there's, you can look through PubMed, but as we know, there's not much there. We were looking instead at outbreak reports, national cholera plans, non-reviewed studies from UNICEF and so forth. And the Afro outbreak bulletins were really useful, as well as the UNICEF cholera bulletin that I think used to be published for, for many years. And Emro as well. So how do, what, what kind of information did we extract? So we were concerned with dates of each cholera outbreak to tell the, the story of that cholera outbreak. So here are the different kinds of dates that we looked at. Everything from symptom onset of that primary case, we needed that, to care seeking at the facility, outbreak detection when it was declared an outbreak, investigation by local authorities. So, you know, when it was first investigated, as well as the first cholera specific response activity and then confirmation by culture. We also tried to look at, you know, how was that outbreak detected? Was it a, was an alert that was, that was came through the community or an alert through health workers that was just sent immediately to the surveillance system? Or was it the weekly indicator based surveillance that surveillance officers do weekly that sort of showed it a change in, in trend? So that, that was definitely of interest. So here are the different kinds of analyses we did. So the most basic kind of analysis was just to look at the median delays for outbreaks by region, et cetera, and the interquartile range. So that gave us a, an idea of, of what the delay was year to year across these outbreaks. And we wanted to look whether there was sort of a global change in, in presentation, investigation, response and so forth and delays, using the year as a predictor and a regression. And that would give us an idea of the trend line over time, whether it had decreased or increased or so forth over a long period of time. And then, as I was saying, we looked at predictors to that delay to response and looked at different kinds of predictors like the signal type, the region, the WHO region, the type of crisis and so forth. So there's again, more details in the paper. And then, because there was not a lot of data on how big those outbreaks were when they were detected, investigated and so forth, we used a simple branching process model, mathematical model to estimate that early epidemic growth within the first 30 days. If the, if, you know, at, at those delay periods. And that gave us a median epidemic size for each of those delays. And it let us also kind of determine the proportion of outbreaks that were below 20 cases and that we kind of arbitrarily said would be feasible for containment. And importantly, I won't go into all the details, but we started with different assumptions of how big the outbreak was at the time that it was detected. So it could have been three cases only, it could have been 20. And that kind of gave us an idea of the background community transmission at the time. So here are the results. Overall, we found data and stories of outbreaks from 76, 76 outbreaks from 34 countries. Won't surprise you that most were from the Afro region and some were from Emro and, and also the Wipro region as well was represented. Here are the different delay points again. And in the bottom line there, you'll see the median delay and interquartile range for each point in the outbreak. And that sort of summed the 76 outbreaks over time. And we see that the median delay for the care seeking and outbreak detection was around five. So that's, you know, inside of a week, these outbreaks were being detected. And care seeking was happening. Similarly, the delayed response and investigation was less than two weeks. So investigation was median seven days, response was median 10 days and confirmation was similar. So everything was happening within a one to two weeks. And then for the estimation of epidemic sizes, in the first row, we see, what we're seeing here is if we look at a small outbreak at the time that it was detected, there's only three seed cases. Maybe they were all happening in one household, for example. And we are kind of dividing them by the delay to care seeking and delay to response. So within five and 10 days, the first five and 10 days, we see that almost, you know, 90% of the outbreaks were, were less than 20 cases. More than 90% were less than 20 cases. So we kind of consider that containable in a way within the first five to 10 days. So that's good news. So in this, if you look at the second row, this is where community transmission we consider to be higher. So there's 10 seed cases, maybe a couple of households affected. And what we see here is that outbreaks were, you know, very few of the outbreaks were less than 20 cases at the time of detection and care seeking and response within the first five to 10 days. So less than 1% were below 20 cases, which isn't such good news. And here is the result of looking over time at all the different delays over time. And we see a global reduction in red here of the outbreak detection. I'm sorry, the time to response of five, about 5% over time. Global annual decrease of 5%. And we see similar decreases for, in delays to detection, investigation and confirmation. So that's, that's good news overall. So what could be underlying some of this? Well, we did find that having any sort of early warning system was useful and associated with a reduction of response of around 40%. So that's compared to, you know, looking weekly and doing the weekly analysis of trends in acute watery diarrhea to see, you know, what's happening. If you had an immediate alert system from the community or from health workers, it was useful overall. So obvious limitations here. There was no global registry of cholera outbreaks. We are pulling data and dates from all sorts of outbreaks. We did find was very useful to look at the WHO Afro reports of outbreaks that, that are happening weekly, that tended to, you know, pluck out some important information per outbreak that we could use. And, and that gives us an idea of what kind of standard data would be really useful for monitoring those outbreaks. Second, the branching process model captured some early growth. It doesn't really give a, a, a complete idea of what, what's happened, what can happen in, in an outbreak, especially because it doesn't really count for population susceptibility by vaccination or prior exposure. So it's kind of simplistic, but just gives us kind of an illustrative idea. So the main discussion point here is there's an, I'll just jump to the bottom. There's an importance of early warning from local health facilities and communities, really integrating early warning, whether that means doing rapid diagnostic testing at the district and health facility level and having community based surveillance or sentinel surveillance, integrating this at the community level and district level to be able to launch a, a, a quick investigation that doesn't wait on the central level to, you know, to, to put that into place. And that does give the potential for a targeted response to small outbreaks when detected early, because we were seeing these median delays to case presentation and detection less than a week and maximum 10 days to, to response. And so this gives an idea of the different things that we could do and that, that are already being done. There's many examples from Afghanistan, Chad, Nepal, et cetera, to that gave some good news stories of how response and investigation was accelerated at the very local level. So the paper goes into more qualitative details about each of those outbreaks and, and, and what helped. And there's an appendix that kind of tells the story of each of these outbreaks if you're interested. Thanks so much. I won't take up more of the, more of your time.
Thanks so much. Super presentation such as. And, and Ruby has put the, the link to the paper in the chat as well. Thanks. And we'll jump over to Izzy and then hopefully we'll have a good, a good moment for discussion and exchange of all this. Great work. Izzy has your connection now.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, it's possibly okay. I might not have my video on just, I might say hi just.
You're allowed.
It's a bit dark. Can you hear me? Is that okay? Great. I'll turn the video off just because of the connection, but hang on. Just to confirm I exist. Just to confirm I exist. Okay, I'm also going to confirm that you can see my, see the screen and not the notes. Is that right?
See the screen and not the notes. Man, what is in everyone's notes?
Perfect. Great. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. I'm Izzy. I am a member of the team of the KI in the DRC. Some field supervisor for the team there. So many of you will probably know about the KI already. So we're an operational research unit. And we work by applying integrated outbreak analytics to explain trends in different data sources to provide essentially a holistic understanding of the dynamics of outbreaks and other public health emergencies. So we've been collecting data on cholera outbreaks in the DRC in North Kivu in the east since the beginning of, of twenty twenty one and in Tanganika in the southeast since early twenty twenty two. So I'm going to give you just a bit of an, of a, an overview of, of what that looks like. So when we talk about IOA in this context, so, so what kind of data are we looking at? We have cholera line list data. So this is suspected cases which are recorded and shared in real time by CATTI partners. So CATTI is the Case to Area Targeted Intervention Program that's operational here. And so we work with the, with the CATTI program. And they provide us with their, with their data through the line lists. We then have our teams in the field providing ongoing, ongoing data. So we have an ongoing data collection system, which is in support of the CATTI program, but it's essentially post intervention monitoring. And it's a, it's a survey that's conducted in each of the case households and in the Cordon Sanitaire as well. So between fifteen and twenty households in the, in the area just around the case household. And then in addition to this, we can, we conduct intermittent quantitative surveys as in one. Then we're also looking at different events and phenomenons, so things that might influence the infection risks, as well as healthcare seeking and, and cholera prevention behaviors of communities. This could be, for example, flooding Lake Tanganyika, the, no one quite knows why, but the, but the lake levels have been rising for the last year or so. And this caused some, some severe flooding and possible hypotheses for increased cases of cholera. Then we look at things like price trends, so and population movements and climate. So for example, in, on Lake Tanganyika as well. So there's a lot of fishing and commercial activity. But in North Kivu, where we're also working, there's a considerable amount of population displacement. And that's been particularly relevant of late. Then another point is when we look at the gender and socio demographic analysis, and this is through mixed methods research, so through the, the quantitative surveys that I said before, but also through, through qualitative research that we do fairly systematically. But the, when, when we're talking about gender and, and, and social norms that we're looking at, so it's things like levels of education, types of work that men and women are doing, household responsibilities, et cetera, and how those different things might influence the, the risks of cholera or the capacity to, to prevent. Then we also have access to DHS two data. So they actually, we actually don't have access to cholera data. I think it's not systematically collected. But DHS two for different health indicators that can, that can highlight the broader issues relating to cholera and cholera risk factors. So it could be other, other diarrheal diseases or, or malnutrition, for example, or measles, which, which can, you know, be considered as, as comorbidities for, for cholera. And then lastly, we'll also include program data. So this could be of, of any response actor essentially, but for example, water provisions of their organizations who are, who are supplying water. CATTI, the CATTI teams distribute kits for cholera prevention and anything essentially that might influence the capacity of populations to prevent or, or treat against cholera. So what we, what I'll just show here is, is how, when we apply IOA for cholera in, when we're applying it in, in North Kivu and in Tanganyika, we've highlighted quite a few differences. So differences in caseloads, so between men, women, adults, children, differences in transmission chains, risk factors for infection, and also in opportunities for, for prevention. And this is particularly when we take into account social and gender norms. So looking at North Kivu, so our target health zones are in Neeragongo, Karasimbi, Goma and Kurachay. So these are just areas just, just outside of the, the city of Goma. So characterized by generally very high levels of unemployment and low socioeconomic levels as well. So, and it's also linked to, links, we see the image there. That's, that's something I took last week in, in, from Neeragongo. So very, very recent displacement from, from an increase in conflict just north of the city. Educational levels are relatively high amongst men and women. But if relatively, I'll say comparing to Tanganyika, because that's where we're also, we're also doing this, conducting this research. But the zones in general are characterized by very, very poor water access and unlimited space. People have built their houses on, on volcanic ground. And it's also very difficult to construct latrines, so poor sanitation as well. And yeah, cholera, the main theory for cholera transmission in, in, in North Kivu in these parts is through consumption of contaminated water that's coming from, from Lake Kivu and generally very low adherence to, to water treatment. And then just a note on the, on the sex and the gender dynamics. So higher caseloads amongst, slightly, sorry, higher case loads amongst men than women, but particularly in, in boys. So this leads us to, this is data we've got from the, from the line list. And this leads us to ask questions. Okay, well, why, why, why young boys more, more, was a high number of, of, high proportion of, of young boys infected with cholera than, than girls? Is that something to do with the, are they, are there particular behaviors that predispose them to contracting cholera? Or is a girl's more likely to have access to healthcare than boys? But these are the kinds of things we would include when we're trying to, to explore these questions in detail. Then generally, looking at the roles of, of men and women. So women typically manage the households. So they're, they're considered exclusively responsible for, for wash. So, so sanitation and hygiene at the household level. And this is including management of water, so collecting water, treating water as, as well. And then also childcare, so we consider healthcare seeking for, for children. And so if you have a child who's, who's sick with, with cholera, then it would be the woman's responsibility, the mother's responsibility to access the healthcare. But then the flip side of that is it's the, the men who control the money and have the, and have the power to make decisions on how it's spent. So for example, if, if the woman, if, if, if the, the woman is, the, the mother is, is exposed to communication messages around cholera and understands the, the need to treat the water, but her husband doesn't provide the, the money or the will to access to buy the, the treatment products. And that's, that's obviously a problem. So, so generally, I mean, women, women in this context could apply prevention and treatment measures, because they, we consider them, you know, they, they have a relative, relatively high levels of education, capacity to recall information and are exposed to the messages when, for example, the community health workers come by, if they're at home and there are radio messages. But this also needs the support of the men who, who control the budget. So Tanganyika, just a few notes on, on Tanganyika. So the context is slightly different. The, the outbreaks of cholera are concentrated typically near to the lake or with, so with communities with direct access to the water or, or indirect access, access. Fishing is a principal occupation of men. So they're, they spend the fifteen, sixteen hours a day on, on the lake. But women tend to, tend to farm or, or conduct small commerce. And that's relevant to small commerce, because often you'll have the women who, who go to the lake to buy fish from the men who've been fishing. And then, and then they have the capacity to then, to then, if you've got a fish, cholera can, can live in the gills of the fish and, and the fish can then be sold at market. And then the cholera can be transmitted further away from the lake. But generally, yeah, cholera transmission through consumption and non-treatment of the contaminated water. And then also, as I said, the, the, the consumption or the, or the trade of the fish from the lake. And yes, I mean, in this way, some cases have been found in areas quite far from the lake in, in areas which have no, have no prior experience of cases. And typically the, the communities there would perceive witchcraft to be a principal cause, which of course also impacts, impacts healthcare seeking if there are cases of cholera. And then compared to, compared to North Kivu, yeah, very, very low literacy and education levels, but particularly amongst women. So then looking at the, the section gender dynamics. So yeah, more cases amongst, amongst men than women. And, and also amongst a greater, greater caseload amongst adult men. So this then leads us to the, to the theory that, that, that it's fishermen who, who might be most at risk. Women, again, managing the household. And we could consider them more exposed to cholera transmission at a household level. But they also then have a capacity to prevent transmission at a household level. And, and interestingly, men, men don't believe they have a role in cholera prevention, because they don't believe they have a role in maintaining household hygiene. But then again, there was, when we were conducting this research, there was a, a, a lack of, people were not really aware of the, of the, the fact that cholera maybe would be contracted also through, through activities in the lake. So yeah, I mean, links to that. So men, men are more exposed to cholera at the source. So men who are away fishing and possibly contaminating the lake water, because they don't have access to a toilet when they're in the lake. And, but then we could also say that whilst, yeah, whilst women have the capacity to prevent transmission at the household level, men also would have the capacity to prevent transmission at the source and also to prevent contracting it, capturing the cholera to, to bring it home in the first place. Something, something also of note then, it also links the education levels is that men, men not being at home for most of the day. So they, they have less exposure to the messages around prevention and treatment. And whilst we find that men typically had a higher level of education than, than the women, they were not at homes, were not exposed to the messages. But also, but if they were exposed to the messages, they might have a greater capacity to actually apply, apply the, the practices. So just looking at a couple of things on how the data is being used. So again, the, the main, well, the objective of, of the, the work of, of the KI is to generate evidence in order to, to support decision making for, for response actors. So the Ministry of Health for actors in this case, who are working in cholera response. And then also to better equip communities with the capacity to prevent and treat cholera themselves. Just a few examples. So one of the, one of the results we find in, in North Kivu was, was generally a low knowledge around water treatment and, and conservation, so storage. And then also preparation and administration of, of RRS. So we worked, we presented the, the results to the, to the Red Cross. So yeah, the CATTI partner in, in, in North Kivu with support of the Ministry of Health and, and some other partners. And with, together with them, supported the development of some, some audio visual messages. So they made, they made some videos around, around cholera prevention and, and treatment, which was great. And, and these were videos that were disseminated through Facebook and WhatsApp, et cetera. Another example was in, in Tanganyika. So, so last month, we were looking, we would, we were presenting the results to the, the, to the territorial administrator and Regidiso, so it's the, the main water provider. And one of the issues we were presenting was about the, the, the water pipes. So in Moba, one of the health zones there, so water pipes supplying water to the community. Many of them were, were, were unstable, rusty with, with many holes in them. And so they were, they were being filled with dirt very easily and, and just contaminating the water, not really serving the purpose. So the recommendation developed with them was to, was to put in place a, a plan, a recovery plan, it was called, with Regidiso and support of the, of wash actors, but, but managed by the, by the territory administrator and his team in, in Moba to, to repair and replace the, the damaged pipes and to ensure that the water was, was coming out the taps when existed clean. That was great. So we're in the process of, of monitoring the implementation of this particular recommendation. And the third one just here is another example. Looking at capacity building needs of, of, of community health workers on cholera, on cholera treatment and water treatment for cholera, sorry, I should have written that. So looking at the, this, this, so we would, we worked with them to, to develop a program for capacity building of the, of the community health workers in one of the particular health areas around Goma. And, and so you see a photo there of, of one of the sessions that they were, they were running. So that was, yeah, working again with the, with the Ministry of Health, but the, the health centers in these particular, in these particular health, in this particular health area. So just linking back to IOA. And so why, so IOA in this context has proven useful. So there's clearly lots of data available. It's very accessible. People are willing to share it and it's, and it's relevant. So there is a demand also for the, for the analysis and that's, and that's great. But, and, and also whilst cholera is an old disease and we've, we've heard quite a bit, a bit of that already, but, but we, you know, many people will say, okay, we already know everything about cholera. But using IOA, we, it, it provides us more of a context specific information and, and in order to us, in order to, to allow us to address specific issues in a particular area. So that's, 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 that's a really, this plus of IOA, using IOA here. But what we could say is that after, after a time, we find we're not necessarily collecting terribly new information. So we're, we're, we're reaching a degree of saturation. So for example, in, in North Kivu, a lack of water, a lack of access to water is a, is a, is a very, very clear issue. And it keeps coming up again and again. So, so then we need to look for novel approaches to prevent the, present the information, to share it and to try to get this evidence used. But then this may, sometimes we think, okay, well, maybe this is, there, there are, there are limits, limits to what action can be taken without, without governance or, or political will. So, so larger, larger scale interventions, looking at poverty reduction, looking at changing, really large infrastructural changes that, that can't be, that can't be implemented at the, often the, the sort of smaller, uh, local level that we might be presenting the information. So then the, the main question there is then, is then, should we be collecting this data indefinitely? And, and when, when do we stop? So how can we, and, and when, for example, can we pass on the, the baton to development actors or, or the, the government to make sure that they, but to, to support them with the implementation? Great. So that is everything from me. Thank you again for the opportunity to, to present. One thing I was just going to add at the end is that, is that in addition to, to this ongoing analysis, we're also looking at anticipatory action for, for IOA and cholera. So that's something that we're, we're hoping to start off, start with. Maybe Simone can, can provide a bit more information on that, but that's one of the next things. So thank you and any questions, very welcome.
Thanks, Izzy. I'm very aware of time. So we, we seem to still fall into the same pattern. We need to maybe reduce them. But thank you, everyone, for the super presentations and discussion. Okay, so I see, I think what we'll probably do is, is for those who are able, we will go over probably for a minute, because I'm sure there's lots of discussions. So I'm going to jump right in and let Mark ask a question.
Hi, thanks, thanks for the presentations. So I've, I've recently taken over as a bit of a focal point for the cholera and Ebola issue for the global wash cluster. I think we're a bit late to the party, but we're, we're here anyway. And so we're trying to look at how things like the pillars of coordination are working in different countries and how the sort of joint operational framework is working between wash and health clusters potentially, and any training gaps. I guess I was interested really in Izzy's presentation. And I really liked the example she gave and some of the, the information that, that, that has been gathered is clearly very, very specific and quite nuanced. And she gave examples about how that information is being used by some of the ministries, I think, and local actors, Kivu Red Cross, for example. I, I didn't get much idea about how perhaps humanitarian actors and international organizations are picking up on that kind of information or not. And I was hoping perhaps Izzy, if you could say a bit more about how do you think we can start to make sure that such data and analysis is really picked up and used both in terms of programming and to make sure that the kind of strategic planning by clusters and humanitarian actors is also really nuanced? Can we do more? Should we do more? Or what's your view on that? Yeah. So sorry, it's a bit of a long question.
I could probably give a quick response, which would be, I think, from, from our side, we're, we're all about sharing really. So, so at a very local level, we we, yes, I mean, the examples I gave were, were, yeah, local, so, so Red Cross, community health workers, et cetera. But we also have, have networks of, in provincial level, national level, in Congo clusters, will present, will present systematically the data of our, of our research. And, but we also do, we've done it, so three over the last year. So co-hosted with Funicle, who are the, who are the cholera branch of the Ministry of Health in Congo. We've co-hosted workshops where we've had a slightly more high level participation. And so maybe a suggestion would be that we could do it, I don't know, I mean, Simone is something we could brainstorm, but, but an opportunity, a workshop type. I, yeah, I mean, maybe that kind of thing, maybe, maybe a platform where we, where we present field data, but to, to to partners at a slightly higher level. Because I think one of the things for us, it's, it's it's limit, you know, we're limited, we have, we're a small team and we do lots of our work very much at field level. But, but if we can have a slightly, maybe a formal platform for, for presenting research data on cholera, that could be, that could be something to, to do.
Yeah, so often see fantastic data not, not properly used by colleagues and as guilty as anyone, but yeah, and anything we can do to connect would be, be great.
I think I will take a quick advantage to also answer that question. One of the things that we do have is something called a MANITO, which allows us to track the recommendations by disease over time. So we co-develop recommendations across all the presentations. So if you look at cholera, for example, you will see every time a study has been done, it will have a code and an actor who is responsible for code development. What is the recommendation? What is the objective of the recommendation? How it's associated with a particular problem? So not just making recommendations that aren't associated with evidence. What is the general theme? What is the action? Who is responsible for it? Names are hidden, but they are there, including contacts. We agree on an indicator and a date to come back and follow up on what was done, where it was done. And we hold those indicators that we can actually demonstrate that it was implemented. And so we can track these by disease, by location, by study and over time, to make sure that we have followed back up. This is a tool that was developed with Ministry of Health and all partners in 2018. And so we do use this to help as well. And we are also able to track ones when they don't get followed up, why not? Or the different levels of them. So if it's strategic, if it's funding, or if it's very field level. So I will just add that. I already chose a fun tool. So Izzy, I also, so first I see your question and I see Flavio as well. Wait, yes, okay, wait, we're, we're, so Flavio, we're all accepting to go over. I'm appreciating this. I've lost Flavio's question. I'm going to go. On, there we go, on lake to fish infection. So if you can explain the methods and reasoning behind the transmission route lake to fish.
Yeah, I was in the middle of typing a response. Yeah, so basically cholera bacteria has been identified in the gills of fish in Tanganyika. So it's a, it's a theory that, or hypothesis that that fish being transported from the lake by, by women who are purchasing the fish from the fishermen has been a transmission route for cholera in, in Tanganyika.
Thank you. And I see Rufus with your hand.
Yes. Okay. Thank you so much for the time and the opportunity to attend the platform. I think it's very informative. But I have two questions. I think the other one you have already partly, it has already been partly asked by my Mark and has also been answered. Like he, I was also having the same sentiment, but we have now a lot of information and data from these researchers. But how can we make the information handy in improving the situations? Then the, my second question is on these researches, how accessible are they by these countries that are having these epidemics? For example, we have a lot of researches that have been done, even in South, for me, I'm covering Southern, Eastern and Southern Africa. But if we check for Malawi, we have been, been having episodes of cholera from, if not December, it is January up to now. We have a big outbreak in Mungochi, but we have a lot of information. How is it accessible to the stakeholders and how involved, involved, how can we involve these stakeholders in the responses? And also the solutions to the matters that we are having was like, at the moment, is MSF, we are responding to the outbreak in Mungochi, but also have very few partners, like the involvement, the government is there, but like their players are not very much like doing much, or like we can say, the involvement maybe is not to the extent that we expect, especially after these trainings from WHO, which I also happen to attend and facilitate, the one for, which was conducted in Nairobi and Tanzania, where we have this cholera free response frameworks and the like. So how can we have the information accessible and also have the partners being more involved to at least to cover these gaps that we have, having collected all the information that we now have? Thank you.
Izzy?
Any chance, yeah, any chance I can pass it on to you?
Yeah, sure, of course. And so I think one of the things about making sure that we have these different leadership investment part of it is making sure that we exist in a cell outside of a silo, you know, outside of a silo. So often, one of the things that happens when data collection is happening, or studies are happening, is that they're really done outside of the program. And so one of the things about doing IOA is really making sure that all the partners are bought in. So for example, the survey tool that we use, GTFCC, WHO, CDC, MSF, EPISONS, obviously the Ministry of Health and like Red Cross, Solidarity, SAF, all reviewed the tool. We had this thing and it's been edited since and reused since, but the idea was going, look, how can we make sure that everybody is in agreement with what we collect so that everybody could be using it? And the other thing is, is really facilitating those, like, how do we become of a service and useful? How are we making sure that what we're asking is both useful and usable and, and agreeing on that beforehand? Making sure that it's available in real time, making sure that we accept, sometimes it's not perfect data, but we in humanitarian do so many decisions without any perfection or any evidence. So really trying to go, okay, what is good and not to make decisions, but getting that buy-in beforehand. And part of getting that buy-in beforehand is, for example, ensuring that the cell is part of the Ministry of Health and part of those actors beforehand. So for example, the cell in the DRC is part of the Ministry of Health, it's a unit within. And, and the process is ongoing. And again, you know, as Izzy said, the teams now are like, do we have to keep collecting data on cholera in Goma? Because we see the same problems and the big things aren't changing. So then getting those big things, we've had another discussion where we've gone back to the wash cluster and the health clusters that look, we have evidence, not just from cholera, but from all kinds of other studies that show this impact of water. How do we use this to write an integrative proposal about the water impacts in Goma on multiple health issues for funding? And so now we've gone back in the wash, teams are very happy with that, the wash cluster is very happy with that, you know. So it's also going back and going, okay, now we've collected so much evidence, we keep seeing the same problem. How do we take this to a higher level? And how do we use those relationships that we already have with ministers, with partners and with donors to say, this is another option now, like, how do we address it? So again, it's not a perfect science or a perfect approach, but that is kind of how we do, making sure also that we're physically in country all the time and working with partners and Minister of Health also makes a difference. Tools, yes, steady. All of the tools are available online, open access. We can show those links, absolutely. I was trying to see if there's another question. Oh, yeah. And I had a question. Okay, so what would you suggest, Izzy? What would you suggest? What would be your advice for CATTI teams with, without dedicated IOA? To get rapid and robust understanding of local context and enhance collection actions at community level?
What we're, what we're discussing actually, and there's something we could, we, what we're discussing doing is to do some capacity building with county teams, in fact. So quite a slightly more superficial level, but to allow them to do just this. So we're actually working, well, we're thinking working, it's a discussion that we need to have with the, with the Red Cross, but with a slight, with a different program, the emergency response program for UNICEF. And they conduct rapid evaluations every, when there are displacement, when there's population displacement. And so we're working with them to, we conducted the session a few weeks ago on, on conducting focus groups and interviews and things, but, but quite superficial, but, but it's kind of the beginning of a, of a an attempt to build capacity without us having to be there at all times. So that's something that we, that we could do. It would, it would require extra work from us, but I think to, to allow, to allow them to do the, to do the, to understand, to ask the basic questions and understand the the general context. That would be, that would be kind of the way to do it. But I think, but otherwise, any, any ideas would be helpful, because I think it's a very good point.
And I will say, the global level IOA team is available for that kind of support depending on country. So if there's a country team that is interested in having even remote support on the, on trying to like, you know, what are the tools? How could these be adapted? Like we said, everything, everything that IOA does, global and country level, is available, open access tools. Setting up not the data in the databases, obviously, but the tools and the frames. So that can all be shared and teams can be supported and guided and coached, whatever they might need to use them, of course. So those discussions are there. I'm not sure that if I've gotten everybody. Julia, that's a really good point about writing up implementation plans. Exactly. So those things can be available as well. I am aware that now slowly people are obviously dropping off and going to other meetings. Thanks, everyone, for the super participation, great questions. Please don't hesitate to reach out. We will put the, the recording up on our YouTube channel. And we will see everybody in two weeks, unless there's any pressing. Thanks, everyone. And we'll see you guys in two weeks. Thanks so much. And thank you for the great presentations, Ruin, Roa, Raul and Izzy. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you.